Good evening. Welcome to the March 25th meeting of the Aiken City Council. If you are inclined, please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge. Almighty God, Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Aiken the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray. Amen. Chief Beranko, will you come forward, please, to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mayor, Council, I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Girado, will you read for us, please?
Statement?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Many of us wanted to make this announcement before we got started so all of you would know and be aware of what's going on. There's been a lot of public interest in the proposed chicken processing plant, which I'm sure a lot of you are here for that. I'd like to inform the public here this evening and on TV that City Council will take no action on them tonight. There is nothing related to that project on the agenda. There is a petition for resolution authorizing the provision of water and sanitary sewer to 1754 Columbia Highway. That's the new water processing center and has nothing to do with the other. City Council will not be voting on the water and sewer rates unless County Council, which again is totally separate from City Council. So County Council approves the request for a fee in lieu of taxes at their April 16th County Council meeting. So I would put April 16th on your calendars, those of you who are interested in this because that's going to be an important date. If it is not on the agenda at County Council, read into that what you will. If County Council does approve the fee in lieu of taxes request, the matter will come back to City Council, this Council, in late April or May and that is if it passes on April 16th, which is at County Council. So that's the statement we wanted to let you all know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before the meeting begins, I will review the guidelines for the meeting. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is required. During public meetings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address Council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed, please. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from Council are posed to the speaker. During the non-agenda public comment section, each speaker has three minutes and can only speak once. I'd like to recognize, before we start, School Board member Patrice Reinhardt Jackson. Thank you. We now move to additions and deletions to the agenda. I recognize Mayor Protam Eric Girado for this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's agenda been reviewed. There are no additions or deletions and I present this as a motion to be passed by Council.
I second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Girado and the second is Councilwoman Broll. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. The minutes were provided to Council for review prior to the meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved, Mayor.
Councilwoman Gregory?
Second, Madam Mayor.
And Councilwoman Price, second of the motion. Any comments or changes? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We have three presentations this evening. The first is a presentation from the Henry Middleton Chapter for Martha Schofield and Dr. Matilda Evans as National Society Daughters of the American Revolution in Women in History. Will a representative please come forward for this presentation and to say a few words to Council? Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Judy Justice and I am the Regent of the Henry Middleton Chapter, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. And with me this evening is Mrs. Margaret Davis, our Chapter Chairman of the American History Committee, along with Marcy Riley and a few of our members. We have a total of 95 members with the Henry Middleton Chapter. During the month of March, the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution asked chapters across the United States to nominate women in their communities who have made significant contribution or a noteworthy difference in their communities to be recognized. Through this stringent selection process, a national committee determines which of these women nominated are deserving of special recognition. On behalf of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution and the Henry Middleton Chapter, it is my pleasure to present the city of Aiken with two National Women in American History Recognition Awards. The NSDAR has selected to recognize Martha Schofield and Dr. Matilda Evans as National Women in American History recipients. Each of these women were nominated to the National Society by our Chapter Committee Chairman, Ms. Davis, and what a delight it was that both nominations of these outstanding women were selected. Those women selected to receive this award were honored with a certificate and a medal. A photograph and biographical profile of each recipient is put on display at the NSDAR National Headquarters in Washington, DC. In addition to the visual display, the Women in History summary is provided for viewing on the national webpage so all NSDAR members and website visitors may learn of the significance each of these women have made to their communities. Martha Schofield was recognized for her contributions in education. After the Civil War, Martha moved to Johns Island to teach freed African-Americans. According to her diary, she became ill, moved to Aiken for the Healing Air. While in Aiken, she founded the Schofield Normal School and in 1882, the school population reached 209 students. By 1910, the school had grown to include two town blocks and a 280 farm. Students were able to take classes in a variety of subjects which enabled them to pursue a higher education and others were able to learn a trade. Dr. Matilda Evans was recognized for being the first African-American doctor licensed in the state to practice medicine in South Carolina. Dr. Evans began her education at the Schofield Normal School in Aiken. South Carolina then graduated in Aiken. She then graduated from Oberlin College in 1891. Two years later, Matilda Evans earned her medical degree from the Women's Medical College in Philadelphia in 1897. She created the St. Luke's Hospital and Training School for nurses in Columbia and in 1922, she became the only Black woman in the United States to serve as president of a state medical association. It is the request of the Henry Middleton Chapter that these two framed National Women in History awards along with their biographical summaries be placed in the Aiken African-American Culture Center on permanent display in recognition of the impact and legacy both Martha Schofield and Dr. Matilda Evans has left on our Aiken community and the recognition here bestowed upon both of these outstanding women. Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, we would like to thank you for your attention this evening. We would like to thank Ms. Sarah Wrightout for letting us be on the agenda this evening and we are so proud of these two women and what an honor it is for the city of Aiken and the citizens to receive these awards.
Thank you.
And of course.
Let me just say what an honorable, a very honorable recognition of two most deserving women. Thank you all.
Good job.
Thank you again. The second presentation is a proclamation for Disabilities Awareness Month. Councilwoman Diggs, will you please read this proclamation into the record? Will the members of Tri Development please come forward to receive the proclamation?
Whereas whereas thousands of Aiken County residents and families are impacted by severe lifelong disabilities including autism, traumatic brain injuries, spinal cord injuries, and intellectual and related disabilities and whereas people with lifelong disabilities are productive citizens, neighbors, and family members deserving of respect and opportunities for economic self-sufficiency, independence, and personal growth and whereas Aiken citizens with and without disabilities work together, play together, worship together, learn together, and grow together and whereas family members, caregivers, and service providers selflessly offer daily care, assistance, supervision, and physical and emotional support to individuals with disabilities to help ensure their full participation in community life and whereas the 2024 Observance of Disabilities Awareness Month celebrates 35 years of advocacy for and successes of people with disabilities in education, employment, and community activities. Now, therefore, I, Teddy Milner, Mayor, and the council members of the great city of Aiken, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Disabilities Awareness Month throughout the city and encourage all citizens of Aiken to work together to promote increased opportunities for people with disabilities to recognize the many contributions made by people with disabilities in our communities and to honor the dedication of the caregivers who bring support and hope to their fellow citizens. And it's signed by our Honorable Madam Mayor, Teddy Milner, and the entire City Council. I would just like to acknowledge Ms. Etha Burgess. This is her 45th year with Tri Development.
And now for the final presentation is the Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Councilwoman Broll, will you please read this proclamation into the record?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
And Mrs. Peggy Ford, will you please come forward to receive the proclamation?
That's good. Got them all up here? All right.
Waiting for me to say something?
No. No, I was just waiting for all of them to get up here.
Okay.
Whereas South Carolina's 1.1 million children residing in the diverse communities across our state, including 36,539 in Aiken County, are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of our great state and whereas childhood trauma, including neglect and abuse, is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone and whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for the victims of abuse and whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children and youth whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, mental and behavioral health, law enforcement agencies, and families and whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that build strong children and strengthen families and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community in partnership to build awareness about child abuse and neglect and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of our children and families in safe, stable, and nurturing environment and whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families and whereas fiscal year 2022, 2023, there were 8,304 substantiated child protective services investigations with 14,711 children in South Carolina and 154 substantiated investigations with 258 children in Aiken County. Now, therefore, I, Teddy Milner, Mayor, and the Council of the City of Aiken do hereby proclaim April of 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout the city and encourage all South Carolinians to dedicate themselves to protecting the quality of life for all families and children so that we can end child neglect and abuse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Because prevention really starts with community partnerships and it is a focus on the joy of childhood, we have a presentation for each of you to have a pinwheel that you can display to signify the joy of childhood that we want for every child in the city of Aiken and we thank you for all you do to help strengthen families and protect children. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thirty-nine, once more.
We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of 30 minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Donald Wesby, CEO and co-founder of Umoja Village and we rent a facility on Hayne Avenue. My comments are in reference to the work session agenda items. Before I do that, I have a note to say happy anniversary to Mr. Bean Bowe and his wife Catherine. So, happy anniversary. Regarding the item on the bicycle and pedestrian data review, it was mentioned that a lot of the data was collected by cellphone and I would strongly ask City Council to perhaps conduct a paper survey or some type of survey to ensure that we capture those individuals living on the north side. I would hate for us to go down the path of looking at infrastructure dollars and improvements and we leave out the side of town who definitely rides bicycles and walks. Also, item number two, the marketing presentation by destination by design. I didn't see a whole lot of diversity, equity, and inclusion in their presentation, which it could already be there but Aiken is also very, very rich in our history. Of course, the founding of Aiken, the founders of Aiken, we have Friendship Baptist Church. There's a lot of cultural diversity in this town that I would love to see a part of that website. Maybe it's there, but it was not reflected in the presentation. We certainly wouldn't want to give the impression that we are not welcoming to all people. And then, thirdly, the presentation with the retail strategies. I would like to see a national children's entertainment place. You know, I have grandchildren now and I'm tired of taking them over to Chuck E. Cheese in Augusta. So if we had something comparable here, that would be nice. And then finally, I'd like to introduce, sometimes when I'm not able to be here, Umoja Village is excited to bring back to our community Mr. Jaleel Johnson. He's a very active student. He was a student. He graduated and had spent time in Germany and Turkey and is doing wonderful things. He is our administrative assistant and our community engagement advisor that we have hired at Umoja Village. So you will see him from time to time. So Jaleel, if you'll stand. Young man doing great things. Thank you, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Marilyn Feisterer. It's spelled P-F-I-S-T-E-R-E-R. It's a hard name. I want to say I am a reformed or former City Councilor. I spent 16 years on the Indianapolis City Council and I applaud you for what you do. I understand how difficult it can be to have difficult situations come before you and I'm here as a resident on the north side about the Sunny Project. I know you're not voting on it tonight. I just wanted to bring to your attention the concerns that people have. There's been a lot of discussion with a lot of people because we really don't know enough about this project but the major concern that concerns you is the water in and the water out. We don't know if the aquifer can support it. We don't know if there is infrastructure there to provide that water and on the And on the other end, we don't know how that water is going to be processed once it goes through that plant. There are major, major concerns, and it will have an impact on not only the residents, but the schools, the churches, and the businesses up that way. I listened with interest to the marketing project that was presented to you early on, and it occurred to me that if you are soliciting businesses, having a chicken processing plant at the gateway to Aiken does not sound like a good position for it. So I know that there will be more discussion in the future. I just wanted to bring to you the concerns of the people, not only myself, but the folks that I associate with, and help you to understand there is major concern there. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, our leadership. My name is Debbie Librian, and I live on the North Side also, and I'm here to speak to you about Project Sunny. I don't stand alone in my comments, as you heard from our previous speaker. The proposed location at exit twenty-two off of I-20 seems completely out of touch from the vision that we have heard all of you encapsulate and talk about for our future. When I came in this room in the working session, and I heard that gentleman from retail strategy start talking about what it takes to bring people here and how much money is leaving Aiken County. Leakage, that's a very important word in their business. Three hundred and twenty-three million dollars leaving Aiken County because we don't have retail, we don't have groceries, we don't have things and services to take care of the people who are already here. If we ruin what is a gateway entrance to this town, it is the only four-lane, fully set-up infrastructure highway from I-20 into the historic downtown Aiken, and it leads us to South Side. If we ruin that, then what do we have in the future? And how are you going to attract the businesses that you're paying someone for their services to advise you on how to bring them to our area? We need, as citizens, we want, as citizens, those services to come here, and we do not feel that a chicken processing plant will do that for us. There is a lack of information. What we see is a complete industry that a processing plant is only one piece of. And we are asking you to take a look at this, provide us with information, look at the water in the sewer, and go ahead and say no. If the capacity is not there, and if your people don't want it, say no. Don't put that bug on the back of county. One of the things that we are concerned about as water users, as sewer users, as your taxpayers, and we, if we don't live in the city, we spend a lot of money here, you collect our sales tax, you collect hospitality tax when we eat out here. We support the City of Aiken from Aiken County, and we're talking about our entire North Side. We want you to listen, we want you to hear. We are worried that you may be looking at the profitability of a private enterprise over our situation as the residents who are already here. We are looking at your request for twenty-eight million dollars of water and sewer infrastructure upgrades in the capital sales project number five that you're going to ask us to vote on in November. Are you hiding the cost of infrastructure in this type of project? And then subsidizing a business to come to Aiken on the backs of the residents? The people who live, work, and play and spend their tax money here in Aiken? We would hope not. We would hope that you would certainly look at what we have existing here and what we need to do for anybody who's coming. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
City Council. Boy, y'all have a hard job. So I guess you know why I'm here. I'm here to see whether we're gonna, you're gonna march with us this weekend, this Saturday, in the parade, the prayer march, because we're certainly praying for you because you have to make such decisions for Aiken. My shirt says, "Judgment is falling." Aiken is a beautiful city, first of all. I want to thank God for Aiken. I've been living here now for sixty-one years. It's a beautiful city, and God has blessed us. He has blessed us, really, really. Well, he said, you know what? You have lost your first love. We have lost our first love, and he's asking us to repent. That's all he's asking us to do. So we are praying for Aiken. We're praying for the City Council. We're praying for our school boards. Aiken is changing. It is changing. I mean, life is changing. It's a struggle, and God has blessed us. So he don't want us to turn our backs on him now. He wants us to turn to him. And how you turn to him is you stand up for him. We stand for him. I don't want to be here today. It's hard for me to sleep at night when he's asking me to pray for this nation. Our nation is spiraling down, and we are walking around with our heads up in the sky and not even thanking him. Other people around the world are suffering. Those people in Russia, think about it. You go to a concert and you just get shot out. So we are taking proaction. That's what we're doing. That's what this parade march is about. We are praying, we telling the Lord, "We hear you, we see you, and we are standing for you in Aiken." So whoever, whoever got the heart... I mean, this week is the week coming up to when your Savior was crucified for you. He was crucified for us. He gave His life for us, and He's blessed you. You know you blessed, think about it. You are, you are a blessed people. Aiken is blessed. So let's show him our support by praying for our communities, praying for each other. That's what this march is about. And then when we go out to Beverly D. Clyburn Center, we're gonna cry out and say, "Lord, we have let you down. We're repenting. We're turning from the way we was doing, and we want to follow you." So do I have anybody on my side this week? I'm excited about it. I'm excited about what God is gonna do because he's gonna do something when you do something. He's already done. Do you believe me?
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ellis? Jacob? Sir?
Jacob Ellis, South Side. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I don't have anything important to say. I just didn't want to let the opportunity to go where I didn't speak with City Council. So good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, Council members and staff. My name is Amanda Horn. I'm a retired registered dental hygienist. I live in Summer Lakes, which is out on the North Side as well. We're about two and a half miles from the location of the proposed Rayford Farms processing facility. I come before you tonight with serious concerns about the environmental impact this plant would have on our local water sources, the strain the industrial facility would place on our wastewater treatment operations, and the myriad of health hazards our local residents could be exposed to. Chicken processing facilities fall under the umbrella of the term slaughterhouses, which is defined as industrial facilities that process and package poultry, beef, pork, and other meat products. According to the National Institutes of Health, meat processing facilities consume twenty-nine percent of agricultural fresh water in the world, having significant impacts on wildlife and aquatic resources. Slaughterhouses in the U.S. consume billions of water annually and often discard used, polluted, discharges directly into waterways. The industry releases the highest phosphorus and second-highest nitrogen levels of all industrial categories. Pollutants entering drinking water, where processing facilities frequently spray their waste, resulting in a host of health issues, including cancer, autoimmune disorders, asthma attacks, birth defects, bacterial infections, and cognitive impairment in children. The water pollutants include blood and feces, which carry pathogens like E. coli, pesticide residues, growth-promoting drugs, and antibacterial agents, which can lead to an increased proliferation of antibiotic resistance. The high nutrient loads entering natural waterways cause algae blooms and dead zones that are dangerous to human health and fatal to aquatic life. In addressing the questions of whether House of Rayford would be a responsible steward of our local natural resources, you may find this interesting information. In an EPA study, criminal prosecution stated, 2013, the processing facility in Rayford, North Carolina, was charged with giving employees approval to bypass their wastewater pretreatment process and send thousands of gallons of untreated waste directly to the city's wastewater plant over a period of sixteen months because Rayford's pretreatment facility did not have the capacity to adequately treat the contaminated waste. The wastewater was contaminated with blood, grease, and slaughtered turkey parts. City officials were not notified before these releases occurred. House of Rayford was charged with ten counts of knowingly violating the Clean Water Act. A former employee who testified during the federal trial stated the facility would continue to kill turkeys despite being warned that the unauthorized bypasses had an adverse impact on the city's water treatment facility and violated environmental regulations. So in closing, I ask you, how can you, as our elected leaders, assure the local citizenry and public utilities that we will not be faced with these same costly violations and health threats in our local community if this plant receives approval?
Thank you so much. Thank you. In the back there? Good evening.
My name is Winona Specht. I'm a retired scientist from SRS with a background in environmental toxicology. And I want to follow up on the comments that were just made, and I have some information that I would like to provide to the committee. From what I have read, the House of Rayford has an abysmal record when it comes to both violating environmental regulations and also violating worker safety issues. In the past years, they have been fined almost 1.5 million dollars for a number of different violations. Some of them go back many years. But in 2022 and 2023, there were two serious environmental violations. And in 2020 and 2023, there were two serious worker, excuse me, workplace safety violations. Most recently, in January of 2024, they were fined $460,000 for price fixing and anti-competitive practices. So I really think we need to consider whether this is the kind of business that we want to attract to our area. And that's all that I will say. I would like to give this information to somebody. Sarah.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Moniak.
Yes, my name is Don Moniak. I live north of Aiken about, I think I'll be about seven miles from the chicken plant. It is maybe six, I'm not sure. However, I want to make one correction about the schedule. Last week, Gary Bunker, Chairman of Aiken County Council, who as you all know is a very reliable source of information, set out this schedule. April 16th will be the second reading, tentatively, the second reading of the resolution to execute a fee-and-lever tax agreement. That's not the final. May 7th will be the third reading and the public hearing on that. So it doesn't end on April 16th, like was stated here. So what I want to suggest is that the city and the county, A, quit playing bureaucratic volleyball among us all, quit pointing to each other. And B, start communicating better with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In the back.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Meisner. I also live on the North Side, and I'd like to talk about the House of Rayford. When anybody moves into your neighborhood, everybody says, "Oh, what kind of a neighbor will they be?" So I wanted to find out, so I did a little research. And first of all, we need to know that the House of Rayford is coming here because West Columbia is kicking them out. And why is West Columbia kicking them out? Well, first of all, it's the smell. They've been fighting with the House of Rayford over the smell for over thirty years. At one time, there was actually a number that you could call in West Columbia to report that the smell was too bad, and the town would come down on them. There's also the poor upkeep and appearance of the facility. All you have to do is go on Google Earth and take a look at their facility on 410 Sunset Boulevard in West Columbia. Not only is it trashy and poorly maintained, you'll also be able to see the large trucks that line up to offload the chickens. There's also the poor hiring practices. They hire many illegal immigrants. The government has fined them, has gone in and fined them. And they also hire a lot of people through the EB3 visa program, which recruits people from overseas to come and work there. They are also a second-chance employer. That means they employ people who have recently got out of prison. And so when they say they're bringing 900 jobs, I want the people of Aiken County to understand you're not going to get those 900 jobs. According to ProPublica, the House of Rayford ranks among the most dangerous poultry processors in the United States, especially for especially vicious hand injuries. Now, they would like to leave West Columbia because they applied for a zoning change. Near their plant in West Columbia, they wanted to start raising chickens so that they wouldn't have to truck them in. So I'm sure they're planning to start raising chickens right by their plant here. Okay, secondly, let's not forget about these questionable workers. That I want you to remember, these questionable workers will be working 1.4 miles from J.D. Lever Elementary School. Do we want questionable workers 1.4 miles from an elementary school? And you want to say, why does Rayford hire these people over local workers? Well, these are desperate people who cannot afford to lose their jobs. They don't report poor working conditions or safety violations, as you've seen from some of the other comments people have made. I want you to think about this. The House of Rayford is not a good neighbor. We need to stop them now before they get in Aiken County. We don't want to be like West Columbia and have to spend thirty years trying to get rid of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Rebecca Lee Phillips-Sameen. Call me Becky.
Call me Becky. Sorry I'm late. I trucked 25 minutes from the hospital. I'm tired. I'm glad I called it. You know, she said they, they, I don't want to say anyway, but when she said they were going to put maybe the chickens there, my little boy was two years old, and my brother thought it was such a smart idea when we came from vacation to take him to one of his friends' farm. Oh my God, there was, must have been 10,000 chickens in that one little, it was long, but I thought there wouldn't be a whole lot. It's like they were just, uh-uh. This is, uh, the smell is horrible, and she's right about the people. Would you want a sex offender down one and a half miles from J.D. Lever? A murderer? Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can, can we ask whoever's against this project to stand up? Would that be appropriate?
Yes, I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have heard you all. Thank you so much. We have listened. We now move to approval and discussion of appointees to various city boards, committees, and commissions. Mr. Beedenville.
Thank you. You have the following appointments for consideration. Nancy Robb to the Arts Commission, Pat Corey, Barbara Morgan, and McDonnell Law to the Design Review Board. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept these nominations?
So moved, ma'am.
Councilwoman Gregory made a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Councilwoman Diggs made, seconded the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Unanimous, passed. Are there any nominations to consider for our next meeting?
Madam Mayor, I have two appointees that I'd like considered. With the Senior Commission, Bonita Pila. She is currently serving and has agreed to be considered for that appointee, and with the Accommodations Tax Committee, Angela Key, to be considered at our next meeting.
Anyone else? Yes?
I have one, Courtney Conger, who was an original member of our equine committee and was on the equine committee before there was an equine committee, which goes way on back. She, uh, she taught me back in the eighties, all I needed to know to appraise horse property, what was good and what was bad. She's been involved in the horse industry for a long time, as well as the real estate community. And she called me and is going to step down. She'll still be involved in Hitchcock Woods, we'll all be glad to know that, but Courtney has decided to cut back on a few things, and I'm happy to nominate her daughter, Georgiana Conger, who I know is girl, and most of us do, so her daughter, I am nominating to replace her.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we now move to approval of recommendations from Accommodations Tax Committee for allocation of funds from the 2024 to 2025 cycle.
Thank you. We do have the list, which is about $484,853.83 to be allocated as listed, and we have about $540,000 available for this, so we, we do have the recommendation with the complete list of all 26 events for council consideration. Ms. Penlin is, the Chairwoman is absent today. We do have staff here, and I thought I saw a board member here earlier, but anyway, and we do have Jessica Campbell here, if there are any questions, but this is for council consideration.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor, that we adopt this?
Councilwoman Price made the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Councilwoman Diggs made the second motion. Are there any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? It's unanimous. The next item is first reading of an ordinance to annex 90.45 acres located on Columbia Highway North, May Royal Drive, and Osmond Drive. Zone the property, plan residential PR, and approve a concept plan. Mr. Beedenville.
Thank you. We do have, first, the ordinance is entitled an ordinance to annex to the corporate limits of the city of Aiken, certain property located on Columbia Highway North, May Royal Drive, and Osmond Drive northeast into zone, the same planned residential PR, and approve the proposed concept plan. Several things, the, since the, this item was presented to council February 26th, the project has been modified, so that we need to have an approved, an amended ordinance to reflect that the acreage is now approximately 72 acres. The commercial piece that had frontage on Columbia Highway North is no longer part of this project. Therefore, we are removing one of the conditions that was read into the record back when a first reading was continued, and that is the initial, it was initially numbered, condition number five, which is that a concept plan is submitted for approval by city council for any future commercial development, and the entrance for any commercial use be internal to the planned residential component. There is no commercial development piece now, that has been removed. All other conditions are the same, and what has happened since this was first presented to council, initially, it was a 333 lot subdivision, then it was reduced ultimately to what we have now as a 250 unit lot, varying sizes of, of housing stock. It has a buffer that is in the plus or minus 70 feet buffer between the, this proposed development and adjoining property on Osmond and May Royal. If you notice the updated memorandum from the developer's designer or engineer, it is a 75-foot buffer. The ponds are now shown as amenity type or wet ponds. The single access is now shown at May Royal with one emergency access off of Osmond Drive close to Aldrich Street. It will be coordinated with the city fire marshal. Approximately 31% of the acreage, which is about 23 acres, is open space, so, and also the property of Ms. Williams, who spoke at the last meeting when the item was continued, is taken into account. Since this item was continued, there was no first reading, so this is a first reading with a public hearing, and it's before council this evening, as presented, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilwoman Jeridoh made the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Price made the second motion. Are there any comments from the public? Anyone over there? Start with the first person.
Thank you all for letting this be the first reading on this and letting us get back to it. I'm Gloria Brown, as you all know from the last few times, and I live on Osmond Drive, 970 Osmond Drive. When the poster was put up this time for tonight's meeting and, and the following one in April, I noticed the numbers didn't look right, so that's when I figured out, well, there must be some property that's been taken away, so now we know it is the Fulmer property on Highway One, and that will no longer be included, which also took away, well, if we started with the 333, that would be about 83 homes, I believe, have now been taken away because that 18 acres has been eliminated. So we have 250 homes, which you had asked, could he possibly do that? But that's all that changed. There are two, well, 75-foot buffer. We're thankful for that, by the way. 250 homes, but the lot sizes are the same. We're still at .14 acres, the largest .17. The density pretty much stayed the same. Yes, there's open space, but nothing really changed as far as what we were asking for, which was larger lot sizes comparable to what the surrounding area is, and I'm sorry, I talked with my hand. We live on almost three quarters of an acre, so you could get five of these lots on our one lot, and we don't feel like we have a big one as it is. So we're just concerned that it's still small, very small lots, and, and not comparable, but we are thankful for the, the 75-foot buffer. Still concerned about the traffic. There again, if there could be a light, and I know you all might or might not be able to do anything about that, but a light at Highway One and May Royal, just trying to make a left turn is, is, is hard. We had a hard time tonight. I mean, we didn't wait that long, but we had to wait a while. So if there are 250 other households, I can only imagine. And one other thing that really has nothing to do with this, but as a retired school teacher, I would like to see the concept plan be maybe checked out a little bit more by the engineering department, a lot of misspellings, and that bothers an old school teacher here, so.
Thank you. Yes, sir? Good evening.
Good evening. Your Honor and City Manager, thank you for getting back to us on emails and all the folks involved in this, and is it Richard Cowick? Excellent to deal with, with the planning as far as ebb and flow of information. We're very excited about the 75-foot buffer. I think it's 75 foot down May Royal, down Osmond Drive, with no penetration of traffic on Osmond Drive except an emergency crash gate. That's exciting. Realize that they did cut back on the housing, back to 250. Still going to be small lots. I understand, think, something's coming there. We, we're not foolish. We realize that things are moving in that direction, so I guess going forward, if this thing is approved, we still have our concerns, but if we, we know for a fact that it's 75 feet and not 70 or 60 or 50, as things can change, 75 feet around it, and also, thanks, Ms. Brown, for bringing that up. The fence, they're going to have a fence at the 75-foot mark to continue the, the entire circle, except where they come in and out, and I think they said that that would be maintained by the homeowners association, so I guess all that stuff would fall into their hands. I know something's coming. I, I think we're making progress as far as, it would be great for nothing to be back there, but I don't own the property. If it was my property, there'd be nothing back there but trees. But anyway, I, I want to thank these folks for coming back, to you guys. I, I wish there was nothing there. I wish there were less houses, because I have a three-quarter acre lot, and then I bought three more lots. I have like three and a quarter acres, and there're going to be like 10 or 11 houses behind me, so it really doesn't mirror our street, and you guys know that. I mean, you, you know what we're dealing with. We appreciate it. I, I guess, how much time? This thing goes forward, who, who is a contact person when something like this goes to the next phase? Well, if something is not being done correctly, if they come back and blade off at the 50-foot mark or 25-foot mark, who do we contact on that?
That would be the planning department.
Okay, okay.
Or me.
Okay. It's just, you know, it's easy, it's, it's easy to get all this stuff talked about, and then we lose something in translation, but I appreciate the idea that that 75-foot buffer, because I have it, and they're going to maintain that wooded buffer, that's a good thing, and that's a positive thing going forward, so I'm not nearly as opposed to it. I'd love for it not to be there, but I don't own the property, and I, I understand we've got to move forward, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Chad Crank. I'm at 588 May Royal Drive, and I just found out tonight that if anyone has any issues with this development, it's going to be us, because that is right beside our house. Let me give you a little bit of a, a background piece. Peace is very valuable. So when we first bought that house, over half our backyard was covered, just like the woods in the back where they're planting on the building. We busted our tail out in that yard to wipe it all out, clear it all out, make room for our grandkids to come in there and play whenever they come over to Gigi's house. That was the whole idea, was to give them a yard to come out there and play with, and play in. Now that there's traffic going to be coming down right beside our house, there goes our peace. Peace with the construction of all this that's going to last, I'm sure it's going to last a couple of years or so to build all these houses. I know there's things coming regardless, like last guy said, there's somebody, there's something going to be happening in that yard, in that field, and that's fine, but I don't want it to jeopardize our peace. Peace is of, you know, cars coming in and out right beside our house with the boom-booming, the speakers, the loud exhaust, people walking over across the street to the fairgrounds instead of having to drive and park the car or whatever, you know? If anything, I would, I would like to recommend them having a, either a wall built up all the way down through that entrance to block off our property instead of just having a fence, because I'm the type of person that I will protect my yard, my property, and for my peace, I would like to recommend having a wall built up for the entrance and for the kids, my grandkids, just to keep everything safe, and I can't stop with what's going back there. Who knows what's going to happen, but the amount of houses, even though it got reduced down, it doesn't really, like she said, it doesn't really specify, you know, with how many houses with the yards, you know, is going to be taking up place, but that's what I would recommend for us, for our sanity, is to have a, an eight-foot wall instead of a fence for anybody from coming in, throwing trash over in their yard or whatever the case may be, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Do have handout, like everybody to have for what I want to speak about. Hey, my name's Don Moniak. I live in North of Aiken. I think I only have seven handouts, so I think Mr. Woltz is, could you get out your memory graph machine and make a few more copies?
I'll share.
Anyway, I want to talk about, first of all, is everybody aware, I, I don't think you are, the May Royal Residential Development Traffic Impact Study, prepared for Midland Valley Development LLC by Kim Lee Horn. It's not in the packet. for Midland Valley Development LLC by Kim Lee Horn. It's not in the packet. What you have in the packet is an interpretation of this by the city's consultant. And why that is, I don't know. Why you have filtered information, I can't answer that question. If you look at that aerial photo of the junction of May Royal, Kaolin Road, and Highway One, there's something like 10,000 vehicles that go through that area every day, according to DOT. And many of us pass through there. So this is a county issue as well. This is, this affects thousands of people every day, and overall, tens of thousands of people over the course of, say, a month. And none of us want to be broadsided while driving that way because it's poorly designed, which it is in one place. Kaolin Road, as you can see, is not perpendicular to the road, which makes for very diff, more difficult left turn for the trucks that come out of there that may be going up Highway One north. The, it's called the existing lineage figure that's in this traffic study, actually shows the Kaolin Road being perpendicular. So one of my questions is, did the traffic study consultants for the developer or the city, did they even visit these sites? Did they visit these sites to look at them, to see how they're structured? Or did they just compile a bunch of numbers and data to meet the requirements the DOT asked for? Because it is not a safe intersection. On page 13, it begins what's called the Turn Lane Warrant Analysis, Turn Lane Warrant Analyses for US-1 at May Royal Drive. It states, "Due to the large size of the intersection and low volume of major street left turns, it was assumed that side-street left-turning vehicles could store in the median to perform two-stage left-turn movements when appropriate gaps are present." And I'm not sure what this means. I meant to send in a question this morning to have an answer by tonight, but I failed to do that. So I'm asking tonight, what, you don't have to answer tonight. I would like an answer sooner or later. What does that mean? Does it mean that people turning left out of May Royal are expected to get into a median and then merge into traffic? Is that what it means? Because there's no median at May Royal and Highway One. There's two left-hand turn lanes. It's one of the only places on Highway One where there is no median. There is no fifth lane, what some people call the suicide lane, although I think it isn't quite that, to that extent on that road, driving it a lot. But nonetheless, there is no median to turn into there. There's two, you can see on that aerial photo, there's two left-hand turn lanes, one into Kaolin Road and one into May Royal. So how can anybody merge into a left-hand turn lane? I would like to know. So I really, it needs to be looked at much more closely to May Royal intersection. And also the fact that in this analyses, I may have missed something, but the Kaolin Road itself is not even analyzed. That part of the intersection isn't looked upon. There's no capacity analysis. There's no turn analysis from there. I know it's across the road, but it's very much a part of the dynamics of that traffic system there. So what I'm suggesting, while I have 20 seconds, is that this May Royal Residential Development Traffic Impact Study be placed, be provided to y'all. And I could send it to you. I'll send you a link to it tomorrow so you can look at it. It is a complicated document. I'm still trying to understand much of it, but that turn lane analysis in particular at May Royal and Highway One needs to be looked at much more closely. And I don't think it should be on the developer
Thank you.
to take care of this, because the developer is just one part of it.
Thank you.
There needs to be impact fees on these developers, though, so they can all be put in one pot, so these could be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir? Good evening.
I'm Jason Robertson. I live at 548 May Royal. And just looking at this plan, I hadn't seen it. I didn't realize that it had been changed, that everything dumps out now onto May Royal. We also, I mean, we have the fairgrounds right across the street from us, and the amount of traffic that we have during the fair already will line all the way up out onto the one. So we can barely get out of our driveway when the fair's coming. And I'm just wondering where all this traffic is supposed to go. Plus, the lot size is still, to me, just the high density seems like something that is going to have high turnaround. People aren't going to stick around in a house, you know, that's on such a small lot. Nobody looks at .14 of an acre and says, this is my forever home. You know, it's more of just a stepping stone to get to someplace with, you know, land or something a little bit better. So those are my concerns. I do like the fact that it is less houses. I mean, we want grocery stores and stuff to come to our area, and we realize that growth is going to come. It just seems like the cost on this one just would be hard on the community and the environment around it.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Bruce Myers. Appreciate y'all's time, Council, Mayor. The, it's, what they were talking about with the water, kind of on a different thing. Have y'all looked at what all these developments y'all are doing for supplying water? I know they're going to build a new water plant, but what I don't understand is where y'all going to get the water from. 30 years ago, we had a real problem with water, as I worked for the city, and we were scrambling with Charles Creek, just trying to keep water going to the plant so you could do it. And you design a plant across the road that says we're going to produce X number of gallons of water per day, whatever. It's not doable if you don't have the water. Charles Creek is surface water. So if you have a drought, you just don't have the water. You have wells, and when I was working, you know, we were having to lower the pumps way back to be able to pick up water. The aquifer goes down. So you know the cost that's going to be for the city. Has anybody looked at that? I mean, you know, it sounds like, you know, you're going to get these houses, you get all this stuff going on, but somebody's got to pay for all that stuff. And where's the water going to come from? And, you know, a long time ago, we looked at trying to, even 30 years ago, looking at getting water out of the Edisto River. That was cross-basin. We couldn't do that. That was different. Then they studied going to get water from Edgefield. We ran a water line all the way out, Highway 19, right at the edge of the interstate, and that was going to be done. I don't know where that stands now. But at one time, Aitken had a lot of continuity. They had an engineering firm, Wyman Singleton, that had worked for the city for years and years. They had all the data. They knew what was there. And then we had administrative changes. We had personality changes. Well, they didn't like having a firm that was kind of, didn't do what they wanted to do. They didn't, they looked out for the city, but it kind of changed. So now you've got, you've just got a hodgepodge mess over the years of you've got engineer of the week. You've got this engineering firm doing something, this engineering firm. And nobody really, it's no continuity. I don't know where it stands now, but it is, you really need to look at what's happening with your water. You really do. Because, I mean, you know, you can't, you just can't make up water you don't have. So that's kind of that ended. But a thing that bothers me with what's happening behind us, when we build out there, and everybody in that neighborhood built, this is for the residents out there now, Bill Sibley was an unbelievable man. His word was his bond. He worked for the bank, and if he told you something, you could count on it. But they had all these lots along the road. It was the BF Wyman Estate, and they had cut out these one-acre lots. And when we built out there, it had these restrictive covenants, and they were going to be one-acre lots. And what was going on behind us was going to be, and Mike Farmer did a title search, got documentation here, and it said, you know, we're going to have one-acre lots. And if something happens behind you on the property we own, the same thing's going to happen. And at times, you would think that those deed restrictions would have conveyed with this property, but undoubtedly it didn't. But it's really sad for us as homeowners out there, when we were told that whatever happened behind us would mirror the lot sizes we have now. And that's just, you know, something, once it's been sold and the deed restrictions went away, it can't be done. But as far as the number of houses they're going to build, it just seems too dense. And as far as this traffic light, I don't know who would make the decision that we would have a highway one in May Royal to have a stoplight. I contacted Tom Young last night. He responded first thing this morning. It was just unbelievably helpful. But he said his hands are tied. He can't do anything as far as trying to do that. But I guess city council may could require this to have, at least, to have something out there that would help us get out on the road at Highway One to require a stoplight. When you come up that intersection, if you're going to go right heading toward I-20, if you get, well, somebody else is impatient, they come up beside you on the left. So you're trying to go right, well, you can't see, because they're trying to make a left turn. So you've got, the traffic keeps backing up with the cars there. That's how it stands now. And then you have the county with the ambulances and all, but they're trying to get gas. They get a call. They got to come running out there, and then you're trying to get out the way. So the way it stands now, it really doesn't function. So I don't know what it'd be like when you take all that traffic, you take the fairground traffic, you have, I think one of the people with the fairgrounds spoke one time, talking about they tried to have more vents. And so you've just got all that traffic. You've got what's coming from the plant. When they knock off, you have a truck route there, an intersection that says this is a truck crossing. I don't know that that traffic study even addressed that, but it's a designated truck crossing there. Coming in that intersection, the speed limit is 55 miles an hour. As people live out of Crosland Park, the speed limit is right close to that stop sign coming in from May Royal to Highway One. It has a 55 mile an hour speed, but soon as the people leave Crosland Park, they start running 55.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Myers.
It's already hard to get out.
Thank you.
Anything y'all could do to help us out with a stoplight would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can call the...
Well, yeah, Mike Prisbala wants to talk about the water, the water issue.
And Stuart, can we have someone to ease the minds of the traffic? That there will be a stoplight there, we think? Right, right.
I mean, that, yes, that's something that we could work with the county on. I mean, right now, that I did, I also spoke to Senator Young this morning about a signal, and it is not necessarily forthcoming. Mr. Myers is correct. So that's something that could be looked at. I mean, whether requiring it of this one developer, I mean, ultimately, that'd be a council call. But yes, that's something that could be looked at to try to ameliorate potential traffic issues coming out of this intersection. And also, the, I believe the traffic engineer for this project is here, if I'm not mistaken. But I know, Mike, to talk about the water issues that Mr. Myers raised.
As far as water, I mean, the water plant is pulling out five million gallons a day. We're permitted for eight. The last USGS study, we had the river, or the creeks running about 12.7 million a day. So there, right now, there's plenty of water. We did have USGS do a well study on some of the wells in that vicinity, and what they consider, we're still in young water. In other words, the aquifer is at a certain depth, and we're still in that high watermark. So they consider it young water. We're not deep into the water pulling out, you know, from the bottom. There's plenty of water in the aquifers. And there are studies from USGS that we had done just for the water plant, for growth in the north side and for growth on the east side. As far as our water usage, we're at about 70% for our permitted amount, looking at future growth, and we're at about 40% on our groundwater usage. So...
70% is for the, what is taken below ground, or excuse me, below surface?
Surface water.
And the surface waters, we're using about 40% of the permitted surface water usage.
Right. So as far as water, we, I mean, we have a recent model, water model that we had done in 2020, 2022, and we had it updated again in 2023. As far as what our consultant said and USGS said, I don't see a water issue. The new water plant will produce, we'll be able to produce eight million a day, and that's what our permit is for.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. And the traffic engineer?
Yes, sir. I believe May Royal's a state road. I just know it is not a city road.
What, Kaolin Road?
May Royal.
May Royal.
It's a state road, a state road number 495.
Yes. US-1 is a federal highway. So let's add in another layer. Are we finishing, are we talking now?
I believe the, is the traffic engineer for the project here?
Hello?
Right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name's Joe Robertson with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I did prepare the traffic study for the Bay Royal Residential Project. As discussed earlier, you know, we did have a unit reduction from 313 down to 250, also with the removal of the retail portion up front and the elimination of the access directly onto US-1. So kind of in a nutshell, the traffic study that we prepared and submitted previously is now outdated since the traffic has changed. We've updated the analysis to reflect the new plan. As you would imagine, with the reduction in units and the removal of the retail piece, it's about a 35 to 40% reduction in traffic throughout the day and during those PM peak hours. So while we are still adding some traffic to the roadway network, our analysis doesn't show any significant or adverse impacts to the capacity or traffic operations at the intersections nearby. To address some of the comments that were made earlier, with the skew of the intersection at US-1 and May Royal and Kaolin Drive, we did include Kaolin Drive as part of that. The figure does show it. It's just a right angle, but it's just a stick figure for graphical purposes only. Certainly with that skew, it's reflected in the traffic analysis. Kaolin Drive is actually pretty low volume. Because of that, there's not a lot of activity on that side of the road that is impacted by the additional traffic to and from May Royal. To address the concerns about the traffic signal, we did prepare the study in conjunction with city staff and the city's traffic consultant. Traffic signal analysis wasn't something that was requested early on at the beginning of this study. So we didn't collect a full day of data that we would need to do that analysis. But with the data that we did have, we did take a quick look during those peak hours to see if a signal might be warranted. Based on the data that we've got, it's kind of indicating that it probably would not be warranted if you rolled in the rest of the day. As was mentioned earlier, you know, US-1 is about 12,000 vehicles per day, according to DOT data. May Royal is currently about 1,000 vehicles per day. After you add this development on, you know, it would come up to probably 2,000-ish. So just with those volumes kind of working in conjunction with each other, it probably wouldn't warrant a traffic signal, but that's something that we can certainly look into. And if DOT requests it, it's something we could add into the study as well.
Can I ask a question? May I ask a question? Yes.
We'd appreciate that we're looking into.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. You mentioned that a traffic study had been submitted a while ago and now it's outdated.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's where we are right now, it's an outdated study, but you're recommending that we redo it? And is that what you're saying?
So the previous study that was submitted was based on the original 333 units with the 10,000 square feet of retail. So the previous findings and recommendations are now, the new traffic is less impactful because it's less proposed. So we haven't submitted the updated study yet, but we have done the updated analysis and submitted results.
So it was submitted for this same project within the last, I gotcha, I thought it was something really old.
Yeah, it's just within the last several months.
Just to, while you're up here, yes, the other side, Kalen Road does not get a whole lot of traffic. But unfortunately, when the traffic comes, it's usually a great big Kalen truck carrying a whole lot of Kalen and having to turn out into the middle of the traffic and does cause problems. And I'm real familiar with the intersection and yes, I'd like to see a traffic light there for various sundry reasons, but the main reason is it is pretty harrowed coming into the traffic at an angle the way it works out. You're looking left, you're looking right, and you can't gauge, these cars are coming 60 miles an hour from the north to the south. And it's hard to gauge just how fast those guys are going. And as Mr. Moniak pointed out, there is no turn lane to, or a suicide lane, so to speak, as he pointed out, to get into, to merge in. So I don't know what all the vernacular exactly is. I know the fairground people, for whatever it's worth, they want a traffic light there as well because it is problematic for them is going forward too. So again, I think it's a good idea, I've pretty much said that from the beginning, we'd like to. But if Tom Young says that he can't get something done, God help us in terms of, because I've called the South Carolina Department of Transportation, I guarantee you, they ain't impressed with the city councilman.
Right, and just in response to that, you know, SCDOT, when it comes to installing traffic signals, you don't want to install a signal where it's not warranted based on volumes.
Right.
Because then if there's, you know, not enough traffic coming through, people are just gonna run red lights, then it becomes a safety issue. So usually, they have their set of nationally set rules that they will follow and check those boxes before they make that decision.
That's right. And again, it is a federal highway and you've got to work within the framework of what US Highway 1 is. And yes, at night, it's not anywhere near, except when the fair is in town.
Right, yes, sir.
That's the problem.
Just for comments, there is intended purpose for the...
Sorry, just for comments, there is intended purpose for the frontage on that property. And the question is, do we wait until that happens? There's more development coming down the road, that's not your problem, it's that developer's problem. And do we wait to analyze all of this before making a push that we need a traffic light there or somewhere else? That's the key.
Yeah, and certainly as more development comes to the area, those volumes are gonna drive further up, pushing that need for a traffic signal.
Yes, believe it or not, a long, long time ago, Whiskey Road didn't have a whole lot of traffic.
Right.
I can remember.
Now, right?
Yeah, it changes, and I do, that's a good point. It's gonna increase because it's just bound to have that.
Well, of course it will because you got Palomino Oaks that's coming right up the street across from Crosland. So that will contribute to the traffic as well.
All right, any further traffic questions?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Any comments from council?
I just have a question for Councilman Gerardo. I just found your comment a little reckless. South Carolina DOT not impressed with city council?
They, I worked with them on the south side intersection over there, Powderhouse Road. I couldn't get them to return a call, they wouldn't pay, but I got Bill Taylor involved and they paid attention to him.
I mean, because I talked...
The state, the state level.
That's a very generalized comment.
Well, that was who I was trying to deal with.
Okay.
Other words, he's saying he has no pool.
So Ed does not have pool.
Ed does not have pool, perhaps you do.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
The comment that you said, one of the residents said that, you know something is coming. And we know what it is. I have never worked with developers so closely like I have with Chad Gibson. He has been over backwards trying to make sure that he tries to give the residents as much as he can, reducing the number of houses, putting up an eight-foot privacy fence around the property. Because I'm like y'all, I got grandchildren, I want my grandchildren to be safe. And I don't want anybody to see them while they're playing, so I got the... Right, I got, you got the 75-foot buffer, but I've got that privacy fence all around my backyard because I don't want anyone seeing and harming my grandchildren. I think he's asking for a right and a left turn lane. Someone asked about, or made a comment about people throwing trash and stuff. These houses are 280,000 to 290,000. I don't think you're gonna have anybody throwing in the trash from over there, I don't think so. I hope not, I don't know, the way our highways are looking lately, everybody throwing something out because it's a mess. He added some amenities. He took Ms. Williams' property into consideration when they made the last revisions. He's trying to do the right thing. He really is. And we gonna hold him liable when you said, who do we talk to, who do you talk to when there's a problem? When they said they were gonna do something that's not... Maria will be at your beck and call. She already admitted that. So I just want to say we need to give him a chance. Because I'm still looking at grocery stores for that side of town. We need grocery stores bad on the north side and the east side. We do, we in a grocery store desert. Oh, I'm sorry, he didn't pay me to say that, y'all, I'm telling you, no, no money exchanged here. But I just, I just, I gained a new respect for Mr. Gibson. The first time he came, I had lots of questions, that is a lot of house, 313 houses. It was a lot of houses to put on there. And you know, if you ride on south side, you're talking about the small lots, that's all they got. Everything is under an acre. And I'm trying to figure out why people will pay for that, but they are. I wouldn't pay for it, but they're doing it. So I just want you to know, yeah, this is a hard decision that we have to make. But with the revisions that he's made and the amenities, I want y'all to give him a chance. I think some of you have already talked to him, had personal conversations with him. He's a nice man. And he's just trying to build some houses on the north side of town where we need more housing. So that's just my spiel.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? Nope. All those in favor? Oh, I'm so sorry.
No. No, we've moved on to this.
Yes, sorry. I misunderstood.
I had to ask a question of the traffic engineer. And then it led into comments, but you had not opened it up to council.
Thank you, hi.
My name's George Waddell, I live at 1151 Osborne Drive. First of all, I want to touch on the traffic. Before the thing was revised, it was reported that would be 2,900 and something cars emptying out daily on weekdays.
Number one.
And if you cut the houses back to the 250, you're probably gonna cut the cars back to 2,400 cars a day out on the Mayroyal in addition to what's already there. I don't consider that minimal. I don't think anybody else would either. So enough said on that. I agree with Ms. Diggs that the developer's a nice man. Got no doubt in my mind, he's a nice man. Someone called attention to something that he said in previous public hearings. He stated he liked large lots. And he would only buy property with like surrounding property. And he would ensure there were protections in place. Well, the property owners around Mayroyal and Osborne had protections in place. They had promises from landowners, things on deeds that fell off deeds when it transferred, so on and so forth. And we have laws, rules, regulations, ordinances. And the city has an ordinance that says any new development must mirror its surroundings. And I call attention to the .25 acre lots on Aldrich. That's the smallest surrounding. Theirs are currently at .14. Big difference. So it seems that the landowners around this project have lost all their protections except one, the city ordinance and the city council. Please protect us tonight. Make this project mirror the surroundings or vote to reject it. I thank you for your time.
Comments?
Thank you for hearing us again. Jennifer Roberts, 548 Mayroyal Drive. I just wanted to bring up, during the previous traffic study, part of the traffic was going out to highway one and now it's on to Mayroyal. So yes, it's a decrease in traffic overall, but it's an increase on the traffic that's going to be on Mayroyal. And I side with my neighbors, you know, it's less houses, but the density isn't any less. It does not mirror our surroundings. There are still houses on top of houses and we still fear for crime and traffic and turnover. Rental housing, Section 8 housing. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment, yes?
So I am Becky Phillips again, I've been running my mouth and I had to have some sugar. The other night, I went to go see a friend in Crosland Park. My mama used to throw newspapers in the 70s for seven years there. It's real pretty then because it was retirement. Hey, I got lost. I went on Schroeder and I should have took another left and I ended up, is it Mayflower or whatever, on the fairgrounds? Ain't no way I'd put that many, why don't they just do like Crosland Park each? I walked it, you know, being a kid, you don't remember how pretty the properties are. Put them on an acreage. I guarantee somebody'd pay a million bucks for an acre with a nice house. They can make more money that way than putting... That looked, like I told him, he didn't like it, but I walked out last week or two weeks ago and I said, you know, I live in a place in California. I said, it looks like the trailer park. You think you're gonna pay $350,000 to $500,000 for a place? It ain't gonna happen. And it's just gonna be like in Lake Elsinore, California, they got the Byrd District and the President. Of course Becky picks a paper route just so that, because I didn't trust anybody watching my kids. Policeman stalks me first night, he said, what are you doing here at three in the morning? I says, well, I'm got a paper route. He says, oh, no, I says, I live here. And he said, no, this is the worst drug place and we didn't know, we moved from St. Clemente. And then I told him where my place, he says, they had a shootout there and I said, uh-uh. He said, go in the daytime, and they did. If you want the same thing there, go ahead and vote it. But if you voted, I think you each deserve to buy a house there.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson, would you come up?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'm just concerned about the lot size.
Yes, ma'am.
And the traffic.
Well, the traffic, we, of course, had the engineers go through and address any issues. I've reached out also with, to Kevin Weber, which works with South Carolina DOT. And we've talked more about the turning lane off of wire on to Mayroyal. Would that still be needed or warranted for the turning lane there? Because there was such a decrease in the lots that we have. And of course, in his opinion, it still was going to be warranted. And of course, with our engineer said the same thing. As far as the amount of lots that we have, we've cut it back as much as that we possibly could to still have the development. There's been a couple of things said tonight about with the gentleman that lives on Mayroyal where the entrance comes beside his house, that he wanted a wall there. We would be more than happy to work with him on any account to, you know, put up a privacy fence as we were going to do anyway. But we didn't plan for, you know, coming beside his house, one. But we'd be more than happy to if that would, you know, appease the homeowner. As far as the crime, I mean, I, that's, that's a, I have no, I can't say enough that that's not what's gonna happen, but we all can't tell what's gonna happen in the future. But we don't design, we don't design our developments to fit a crime-based or crime-riddled neighborhood. We're trying to have a community here, so that's, that's the way we develop. But that's pretty much it. I mean, we've, on Ms. Williams there, we've tried to buffer her, her lot or her house so she would enjoy, you know, what she's had all along. As far as the setbacks, there's going to be 75-foot in some places, but there's also gonna be about 120 in another. As the, as it jets out in different areas, that's, those are gonna be a lot further from the 75-foot. I think the most we have is 130-foot, but, which that is, I can't really see. But that's, I mean, it's gonna start at 75 and it'll end at 130. On the Mayroyal side, we've also buffered more than the 25-foot there. We've, I think it's at 50-foot all the way down Mayroyal. So we've done what we could to, you know, give the people what they had before. But as far as the, anything else, that's what we've got.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody spoke about an ordinance that may have applied to that area at some point.
You talking about a deed restriction and covenants?
Yeah, and about the similarity of acreage and all that. I mean, I'm just saying, if that exists, I'd like to see it before the second reading, please. I mean, I, I just want to make sure... I mean, I, I just want to make sure of that.
Yep.
I'll speak to one. As far as there is something in our zoning ordinance that relates to the planned residential portion, that, and of course, everything is up to council, it can be waived by council. But one of those statements is that it should try to reflect, any lot should reflect what is around them. Obviously, as we get into some of these older sections of the city, that may be more and more difficult, just due to affordability. So I'll just leave it at that.
You can waive the condition.
She said affordability.
Right, on affordability.
The condition, but that's, I just want to know if it's an ordinance or not.
It is part of the ordinance, but it is also something that can be specifically stated in the ordinance that you can waive.
Also, on Aldrich, to address another comment that was made. Some of those homes are not, are actually less on Aldrich than the half or quarter acre lots. Some of them are point-two, point-twenty. So they're actually a little some, a little less than the quarter acre that, that where ours would fall per usable acre. Because as, as we've said, we've got twenty-three acres that we've set back for green space. So that's, that's where we are.
Let me, I want to be clear in terms of where we are. The twenty acres that's at the frontage of Highway One.
Yes ma'am.
That is open.
Yes ma'am.
So, the detention upon your recreational areas, none of that, nothing else changed. All we did was reduce the number of houses.
That's it. That's, yes ma'am. I think I understood.
No, I said the front. We took away houses in the front.
Right. There was fifty-
But there were no changes anywhere else, in terms of?
Yeah, yes ma'am, actually.
The green space?
There actually, we increased the lot size.
By how much?
Sixty-foot lots. On some of them, we've got about a third of them at sixty-foot lots, instead of fifty-foot lots. We had all fifty, when we first started, but now we've, we've got a third of them at sixty-foot. I mean, as much as I'd like to make them all sixty, we couldn't with what we've got left.
And that's what the public is not understanding, that they all, there were some lots that changed sizes.
Yes ma'am, the third of them is, and that's mostly down towards the emergency access on Osborne. On that back loop of Osborne Road. Right there in the middle. Yes ma'am. That little laser pointer, but, right.
Thank you.
There any other questions, or?
Anything? Yes, please.
I'd just like to motion that if there is an existing ordinance, that it be brought before council before the second reading. Thank you. I'm, I motioned, so I guess I need a second.
That's, I had a problem with that too, with the variance. Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you very much.
Any more comments from council? No? We ready to vote? All those in favor? I'm sorry. I'm getting lost. Is there a motion?
I made the original motion, so you're, you want me to add to it? Alright, so, who seconded me? You did, didn't you? So basically, if I'm understanding-
I think Councilwoman Price made the second.
Okay, yes, you're correct. So.
That's alright.
That's alright, it's not a matter of second, it's a matter of saying it right, stating it right. So we're going to add to the motion that it be researched that there, if there is an ordinance or a deed restriction, that it be brought to light in the second reading. Does that make sense? Alright, I've agreed to add that to my motion. And Lesley, you okay with that?
I am perfectly fine, yes.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. The next item is second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to amend the F, oh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget to include plutonium settlement funds. Mr. Beeden.
Thank you. We have a proposal, it's in the form of a budget ordinance to allocate funds for the projects listed, including money for Smith Hazel, Generations Park, some pedestrian improvements, Children's Place, playground equipment, property maintenance, Pine Lawn Cemetery, bicycle lanes, ADDA, Kershaw Demonstration Project. And this is before council for second reading. And there is still five-hundred thousand left to allocate.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Move Mayor, Councilwoman Gregory. And Councilwoman Diggs second the motion. Are there any comments from public? Yes.
It's me, Becky again. Did you bring your sunglasses, Gail? Did you bring your sunglasses? Remember I told you earlier? I want to know what that plutonium settlement means. Anybody tell me? It says six million, or five million?
Is that five million?
Five. Yeah, five million, five hundred thousand. And then you got a plutonium settlement of two million. Can anybody tell me what that means?
Mr. Beeden.
We, we did receive a portion, there was a lawsuit filed by the state of South Carolina several years ago, and they received six-hundred million dollars. And of that, the city of Aiken received a portion of those funds.
What did the people get for got cancer?
The settlement was separate of what you're speaking of.
So y'all spending money on cemetery where my friends lay. Children's place, that's cool, I like them, they're really nice. I don't know what this Kershaw demonstration is, or I can't, I have my glasses on. What, honey? Oh, okay. What's professional services? Oh, road, okay, okay, road maintenance, park improvements. You should put a lot more in there. Put bathrooms in all of them. What's ADDA? Okay. I was going to wait till the end. You know, the first time y'all met me, I looked like crap. I thought I had the shingles. My husband didn't give me my radiation medicine. I was two-and-a-half years breast cancer-free. This is bone cancer. When I found out the day I had breast cancer, I jumped on that computer. I looked up Savannah River Plant, but I went to the bottom. It was a researcher. He went through a cut in the fence. He took samples of dirt, water, air, and leaves. I started screaming, Robert, says, "What is going on?" I said, "It's in the leaves, Robert, it's in the leaves." That's how I got it. It sat dormant for forty years, and if you don't think I'm leaving tomorrow to go to California. I'm going straight to Hollywood. I thought I would go to the governor. I'm shutting them down because, I already told you, my great-granddaddy was Jefferson Davis, president of the Confederate War. I found him. You know, where that living place they have in North Augusta? I saw Uncle Joe in Aunt Elna Cemetery, and I'm like, I didn't know that's where y'all was buried. I thought y'all was buried somewhere else. At the bottom of my Uncle Joe's feet, says Jeff Davis. Well, Uncle Joe owned from Thirteenth Street to the interstate. His daddy owned Red Cliff all the way to the ocean. And my daddy's the last was, so I am, because my brothers could give a rat's behind. I'm the last living relative. My daddy, and for damn sure, my granddaddy did not sign over the Three Fork River. They're going down. I'm shutting them down. I can't stand seeing my brother, he had the most beautiful teeth, and the radiation after he got esophagus and tongue cancer. He said, "Becky, I can take anything," he said. "I don't care about the cancer," he said. "But they didn't warn me about the radiation. It melted his teeth to his bones." And if you think Becky's going to stand back and watch, it's not going to happen. If I have to go to Hollywood, because I've been there before, and they give tickets all the time, and I'll get my butt on the show, right there in front of everybody, live. I love Aiken. I was gone forty years, I didn't realize how much I loved my home. And I'm not going to let them destroy everybody. I graduated with seven hundred people. I made straight A's. I got no trespass, and they won't even let me go to a football game, because I had to go to, they sent me by ambulance. Joseph at the smoke shop after I found five hundred on those bricks, dead. Teachers, Miss D, Tavia.
Thank you.
Please, don't vote for them to go downtown, because you know I buy it all.
Thank you.
Because you know daddy.
Comments from the, any other comments from the public? Yes.
Mr. Holland?
How are you?
Kind of late, so I'll make it short. I'm going to spell out my name this time, because Channel Six didn't have my last name correct. My name is spelled J-E-N-S-E-N, last name Jennings, J-E-N-N-I-N-G-S. I live at one thirty-eighth Florence Street, southwest, right here in downtown. Do you have five hundred thousand dollars still that is un, that hasn't been used yet?
Undesignated right now.
Undesignated, yes, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Price. I would ask that council would consider helping the city become more accessible. I believe that in, I, in my former career, I worked for the city of Aiken in the tourism department. And I thought that we could do a lot more when it came to accessibility, whether that is physical accessibility, going in and out of buildings, or having, on our tour, having audio descriptions. So I think that might be something to look into. The second thing, I'd really like to see the city of Aiken address. Coming from Los Angeles, I did see, when we did not address homelessness, it got to such a point that it is now. And it's not clearly a sustainable place now. But I would like to see some of that money go to address homelessness, whether that's resources, or some kind of housing. But I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jensen. We've already-
Just, just, just to add, there are some initiatives being planned to address that. Thank you.
Mr. Holland?
Good evening. My name is James Hallie Holland. I live at three twenty-eight Newberry Street, northwest Aiken. The last name Holland, H-O-L-L-A-N-D. I'd like to talk about Pine Lawn Cemetery. And I have here Mr. Wright, who works with me, and Dr. Dwyer, who works with me. I'll make a few comments, and so will both of them. I started with Pine Lawn more than twenty years ago, as a volunteer to head up a committee to, committee to clean up the cemetery. And here it is, more than twenty years later, I'm still with it. Pine Lawn, formerly known as Aiken Colored Cemetery. Pine Lawn Cemetery, as we know it today, was established in eighteen fifty-two. The town of Aiken purchased four acres of land located at Hampton Avenue and Florence Street for forty dollars from James Purvis. The land was to be used as a public burial site for the colored people of Aiken. This original cemetery of four acres was later enlarged to ten-point-two acres, and also served as a public burial place for paupers. It has been in continual use since eighteen fifty-two, and has served as a final resting place of African-Americans in the Aiken community, many of them prominent leaders of the city. The city of Aiken supervised the cemetery for forty years, until eighteen ninety-two, when it did it to the Aiken Cemetery and Burial Association, with the provision that the organization maintain the party, the property, as a burial ground. The trustees were then handed down to the African-American community for administration and maintenance. In nineteen sixty-eight, and again in two thousand and seven, the cemetery was incorporated and reincorporated to provide ownership, administration, and maintenance. The first incorporation of the cemetery was as Pine Lawn Memorial Garden. In two thousand and seven, we were reincorporated as Pine Lawn Cemetery, which means that we've had three official names, plus the other names that the community has given it, such as the Colored Cemetery and Second Baptist Cemetery. Based on oral history, I'm told that most of the family plots were assigned by the churches and the funeral directors. The local churches have always had its significant role in the maintenance of the cemetery. Local churches such as Cumberland, Friendship, Second Baptist, and Wesley made significant contributions to the maintenance of Pine Lawn. Today, there are few unassigned grave spaces remaining. Since Pine Lawn reincorporation, we have gained some new spaces from a quarter of an acre donated by the city. And when we closed off the entrance on Hampton Avenue, we gained a few additional spaces there. One thing we have done that I feel very good about is that we have registered over thirteen hundred graves. And these were graves that had markers, that is the only way we could identify them. So that is how they were registered. This is to let us know who is there. We documented the graves by taking all the information on the marker, and also photographs. We can tell where a person is, is now, and where the grave is located. And recently, we have, well, a few years ago now, it was just after the registration, we have an affiliation with graves across America. And about eighty percent of our graves are on findagrade.com. If you know someone there who has a marker, you can actually go on the internet, findagrade.com, and look up their headstone with all the information. And I think that's a big accomplishment. Often someone gets in touch with me, trying to find the grave of a family member. If there's a marker, I can make, I can take them directly to the grave. But in so many cases, as they, all they remember is a fence and, and an oak tree. We have over twenty live oak trees that are over a hundred years old. We have a fence that's less than fifteen years old, which looks completely different from what the original fences did. I think it is a great disappointment when the burial site of- I think it is a great disappointment when the burial site of a loved one, a family member cannot be found. We know that there are hundreds of people who were buried at Pine Lawn but have no marker to designate the location. In the future, I would like to see a large stone with hundreds of names of individuals who are buried at Pine Lawn-
Thank you, sir.
-but have no marker. I realize this is an ambitious vision, but with commitment, research, and money, it will happen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Dwyer will, if you will, he'll tell us some more about what he and his students have done.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andy Dyer. I work at, uh, USCA, can have been there since two thousand. Um, I got, uh, interested and active at Pine Lawn in two thousand and six. And I've been doing a lot of research and a variety of other things, including repair, restoration, discovery, uh, and documentation of, of graves, so that I could better understand, um, the history of the black community in Aiken. Because Pine Lawn Cemetery is the only cemetery that, that represents the historical black community in Aiken, and, uh, so little of it is known. So as, um, Mr. Holland said, about thirteen hundred names are known in cemetery. The Chikora Foundation came out in two thousand and seven, did a survey, and suggested that based on the size of cemetery, there may be as many as eight thousand burials out there. To put that in perspective, the Granite Bill Cemetery is about three times larger than Pine Lawn and has only seven thousand burials out there. So there are a lot of people. I don't, we don't know anything about those numbers, so I've gone to the South Carolina Death Certificate Database on Ancestry.com and looked at all twenty-five thousand death certificates since nineteen fifteen to nineteen seventy-one, which represents about one-third of the history of the cemetery. And I've found over seventeen hundred different names that presumably are buried in Pine Lawn. If you extrapolate, that means there's no less than five thousand people buried out there. We have no idea where they are. So one of the reasons this is exciting for possibly getting some money from the City of Aiken is to hire, um, an archaeological team to do ground penetrating radar, a survey of the cemetery, and identify every grave, unknown grave out there, as well as document all of the known graves. They'll map the entire place, they'll GPS every single grave, they'll put it on a clickable searchable, um, graveyard map online, plus give us paper copies of the map itself. And then, the future of Pine Lawn can be better planned. Um, is Pine Lawn destined to be just a museum representing the history of Aiken? Or is it going to continue to be, uh, an important resource for the, for the black community of Aiken? And allow us to find more space to inter more people? And know whether or not that we have, we've got the space for that to happen? So, uh, I know that's not a huge number up there, and it's one of the smaller numbers, um, on that list. But it would, it would mean, uh, well, it would be an amazing thing. We would finally have new information on, on the structure and the capacity of Pine Lawn, and help us better able, uh, better serve the community that it has served for the last hundred and seventy years.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Raymond Wright, Pine Lawn Cemetery. And I just want to thank Councilwoman Price and City Manager Stuart Beedenbaugh for the interest they have taken over the years in trying to help us bring Pine Lawn Cemetery back to what it should be. Since it is a national place of historical places, and it's on the National Register for, uh, History. One of the things, uh, I'd like to say is Pine Lawn has a lot of history. In Pine Lawn Cemetery, we had veterans have fought in every war that the United States has been involved in, going our way back to the Revolutionary War, all the way up to Afghanistan War. That's one of the features it has with its veterans. And the other features it have, it has, uh, slaves buried out there in turn from the beginning of time. And it has a lot of prominent people that started, uh, Aiken as it is. So I just want to thank you and take good consideration of helping us trying to bring Pine Lawn back to what it is. Because it's a, a place of, I would say, uh, there's still words to recognize, describe what it is to the community and for Aiken, because it is a historical site. I just want to thank you for your-
Thank you.
-great consideration.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a few comments. Hearing Mr. Holland, just the three of you, really gave me chills. And I say that because I know Mr. Holland's legacy. None of us are getting any younger, and I recognize that you've had some challenges, with two medical challenges, but you still persevere. This gentleman would be out there on that property, raking, you name it, to maintain that property to some accepts, acceptability. And to see the three of you as a team member, cleaning graves that you don't even know who it belongs to. And then the history, uh, with, with our professor at USC, add it to all of that. It really says not only something special about you gentlemen, and you've got others that's on this board as well, but all of you. But it says something about your values for others as well, very, very strongly. I can't commend you enough. But I'd also like to commend our city manager, because our city manager did some things that he did not have to do. And you know that, Mr. Wright. The two of you partnered together, and he came to the rescue of saying, we're gonna do something to help clean this site up. And Stuart, you are owed all kinds of kudos for reaching out, um, and, and giving that aid. I look forward to what's going to come next. The inventory, the information you're gonna bring, this is going to be quite a site for tourism. And that is what I'm looking forward to, uh, in terms of the tourist attraction that it will bring. Now, one may say, why would somebody want to tour a grave? Lots of history, lots of things to read about, based on who's buried in that site. Am I right, Mr. Holland?
Right.
Lots of history. So we have to teach our children and ourselves on how to appreciate history. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, Mr. Moniak.
Yes, my name is Don Moniak. I live north of Aiken, and I've commented on this plutonium settlement on the few times. I would like to say, following in the Pine Lawn, it's remarkable the changes that have happened there, starting about twenty years ago, when they put up the fence.
Mm-hmm.
And, and before that, it was, it was really rough spot. Kids went through there, um, knocking over graves. There's litter everywhere. People didn't want to go there. Uh, and it's just remarkable what they've done. And I, looking at the funding that's on this list, that Very Good Children's Place, is a tremendously positive change, especially compared to that dismal spec building that was there for very long. What, the only comment I have on this list is there's no details, um, of what's actually being planned, unlike what was available last year. I'd like to go over what's been spent and have, offer a suggestion. One year ago, when they're discussing this twenty-five million, and this twenty-five million is very unique, because it's the only, one of only two allocations in the entire five hundred and twenty-five million allocation as a whole, in which the body politic or group had an opportunity to divide it themselves. Everything else was allocated to specific projects. There's no choice in the matter on, at USC, Aiken or, uh, Aiken Tech. They have to build a nurses' building, for example. So a year ago, there was questions as to whether there was gonna be money spent on a parking garage, and it's very good that that didn't come to pass. And this money's available. And a year ago, there was quite a bit of discussion over what, how much to leave for the North Side. And part of that discussion focused on the, uh, Pascalis properties. And I've asked about three times now, and I'm gonna ask a fourth time, what's gonna happen when those properties sell? Because I'll send this tomorrow or the next day, received a letter from Tom Young on February twenty-first, five-page letter in response to some of the questions I've had over the past six months regarding the SNRL project, in which he wrote that the intent of the local delegation, as well as the deleg, legislature as a whole, was that this money should not be used for the reduction of existing local government debt obligations. So eight point five million was spent on debt obligation. And what I'm suggesting is that whatever money is made from the upcoming sale of the Pascalis properties, be put back into this fund, for the purpose of which it was intended. And you're just gonna have to take the rest as a loss. Although, who knows, you may get ten million out of it. We don't know yet. So what to do with that money, you have to all decide. But, you know, I want to bring it back to the Demo Two Hundred program that's under controversy as well, and offer that whatever is brought back, perhaps should be put into a fund that's similar, but not the same as the Kershaw one, in which people who have been maintaining their homes for decades, but are having trouble now, are given assistance, because that's redevelopment as well, in its own sense. Because then the houses don't collapse, they don't get derelict, they don't get dilapidated. And you take care of the homes that are there now, where people have been paying their taxes for decades. And sure, they don't pay as much as they do saying Woodside, but they've been paying longer. And they've been paying their fair share. And why not return that money for a pot that would be managed for a purpose like that or similar to that? There's also been a lot of call at the Schofield Association meetings. Several people have come forth and said their priority is more streetlights. I personally prefer darkness, but I understand the concern, especially in urban areas. Finally, I just want to mention that in that letter from Tom Young, it had an attachment of about twenty-eight pages, seven attachments totaling about thirty pages. And one of those was a letter from the SNRL Director to the Chamber of Commerce, expressing his wish to locate the Lab Building, and this was June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, to locate it on the Pascalis properties. So, it's an interesting little thing to understand, because nobody knew that the Lab was part of Project Pascalis. Lab Project was part, gonna be part of Project Pascalis before Pascalis was canceled.
Thank you.
That was new information to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody left a pen here. Can I have it?
Make it.
Somebody, does this belong up here? Can I have it? Gary?
Anyone else? Comments from council? Council comments? Yes, sir? Council, no? All those in favor? Unanimous. Motion's passed. We now move to new business. The first item is first reading of an ordinance to annex one fifteen Vivian Drive and zone an RS fifteen residential, single-family. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting annexation of property at one fifteen Vivian Drive. It is approximately sixty-two hundredths of an acre. And it is, um, recommended to be zoned residential, single-family, which is consistent with surrounding uses and zoning. And, um, the Planning Commission, all those present unanimously voted to annex and zone residential, single-family RS fifteen. So that's before you this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion from council?
So moved, Madam Mayor, in my district.
I second.
Councilwoman Broll and, uh, Councilwoman Diggs seconds the motion. Are there any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Unanimous, and the motion passed. Now we move to the first reading of an ordinance to annex one oh seven Marvin Drive, and zone an RS ten residential, single-family.
And I do want to note, uh, for the record, Councilwoman Price was, uh, did not vote. She was stepped out of the room.
I'm sorry. I missed that.
And the ordinance is entitled, an ordinance to annex property located at one oh seven Marvin Drive and to zone the same residential, single-family RS ten. This property is approximately twenty-three hundredths of an acre, zoned residential, single-family RS ten. And, uh, the Planning Commission, those present, recommended this annexation and zoning as it is consistent with surrounding uses. And it's before you for first reading.
Uh, thank you. Is there a motion to-
I second.
Councilwoman Diggs motions, and, uh, Councilman, uh, Waltz seconds it. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? And let me say that Councilwoman Diggs is, I mean, Price, sorry, is, um, not in the room. Everyone else has voted. The final item under new business is first reading of an ordinance to rezone property on Greg Highway and Loki Drive from Office to plan residential and approve a concept plan. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, an ordinance to amend the zoning of real estate owned by several owners from Office Institutional O to Plan Residential. The applicant is requesting rezoning of ten point one acres, uh, to Plan Residential, and a requesting approval of a concept plan. This applicant is proposing construction of, uh, an eighty-unit multifamily development with four apartment buildings, a clubhouse, and a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. Since it is of a certain size, uh, over five acres, it must comply with Plan Residential zoning, which it requires a concept plan reviewed by the Planning Commission, approved by the council. Uh, this property is undeveloped and extensively wooded. This is, um, the number of units is within allow, is within our allowable twelve units per acre. And it will consist of a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Uh, there will be four structures with three-story fronts and two-story rear elevations due to topographical change. Uh, the heated space will range from nine hundred and fifty-five square feet to thirteen hundred and twenty-two square feet with brick veneer and vinyl siding. Be a clubhouse, picnic shelter, ADA compliant playground, rain garden, and exercise trail, community garden, disc golf, and dog park area with a mail kiosk area. It does, the plan does include provisions for the required forty percent open space with necessary setbacks, two entrances accessible from Greg Highway, um, and a boundary fence along property abutting on Loki Lane, or parallel, I should say, with a regional detention on to address stormwater runoff. The Planning Commission reviewed this at their March twelfth meeting. All those present unanimously voted to recommend approval with the following conditions, that a minimum, number one, a minimum of half of the required open space is improved for passive or active use by the residents. Two, that the development complies with the City of Aiken tree preservation and landscape requirements. Three, that an encroachment permit is granted by SC DOT for each development entrance. Four, that the entrance sign be a ground-mounted monument sign, no more than thirty-two square feet or thirty-two square feet total for a double-sided sign, and should be no more than six feet high. Five, that the applicant sign an agreement stating conditions of approval within one hundred and eighty days. Uh, six, that the app, excuse me, seven, that the transfer of ownership occur by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Eight, that the additional parking spaces are added up to twenty-nine spaces, unless the additional parking spaces unduly affect open space or site design. This determination will be made administratively by the Planning Director. Nine, that each entrance provide a minimum ten feet wide divided entrance with a right turn lane. nine, that each entrance provide a minimum 10 feet wide divided entrance with a right turn lane. The turn lane is subject to DOT approval. Ten, that the 10 handicap spaces are reduced to five handicap parking spaces unless otherwise reduced specified by federal housing requirements. I do want to note, several comments came up at the Planning Commission meeting. There were two previous applicants for multifamily uses at this parcel. Under, they did not ask for a zoning change at the time. They were asking for a special exception under the Office zoning designation. The first one, the first application was ultimately withdrawn by the applicant. Again, the separate app, separate developer. Second, the, sometime back, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved multifamily development, but it ultimately never got built, and that approval issued in order, I should say, issued by the Board of Zoning Appeals expired. So this item is before council this evening for first reading.
Would the developer like to come up now, please? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I'm Nate Roman-Folks. I'm the vice president for the Taff Mills Group, where the applicant. We are real estate developers. We specialize in workforce housing development. And I won't go through the site plan, because your city manager did a great job of that, but I'll just tell you a little bit about ourselves and what we are proposing here for this site. Proud to say that we are a top 50 affordable housing developer in the country and working our way into the top 25 here soon, hopefully. And we develop workforce housing in South Carolina, North Carolina, Virginia, and Maryland. And the principles of our company have done over 100 communities, developed over 5,000 units, and are, we are very excited to have our first project here in Aiken. I do just want to emphasize the amenities that we have here. I've called this workforce housing. What that means is that this product, this project, is designed for residents and families who have jobs, are making money, but simply because the amount of their income isn't high enough to afford most market-rate housing around here, our rents will be. So we'll be rents, we'll offer rents from around $300 to $1,100, and we'll serve households making from under $20,000 to about $55,000. And we believe this will be filling a specific need in the market for housing at these income levels. No, we do build very, I think, beautiful and awesome communities, but also communities that provide a lot of amenities for the residents. We're proposing a clubhouse here, a covered picnic area, community gardens, a playground, a business center, recreation area, a, about a quarter-mile walking trail around rain garden that'll also be stormwater. And we will have onsite management that is there every day, ensuring a high quality of living for the residents as well as the neighbors around our site. Safety is, of course, one of the jobs of the onsite management. We do a high upfront investment in safety features for the community, placing security cameras strategically throughout the property, as well as in the ingress and egress points. Let's see, we are proposing to meet all the city's requirements. We're happy to abide by the 10 10 regulations that the city manager read as well. And we're excited to be in Aiken. We think our project meets what's called for in the comprehensive plan of developing housing that will reduce barriers to, for people, the diverse population here in Aiken. So we're happy to be able to have the opportunity to do that and are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, I was at the.
We need to make a motion. Make a motion.
Move that we adopt this.
I second.
Councilwoman Price moves the motion, made the motion, and Councilwoman Diggs second the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from the council?
I think there's a hand up.
Becky says her hand.
Oh, sorry. I missed that. I apologize.
I just want to say real quick, can you buy his property and you put houses over there instead of him?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Becky.
I just want to share the same information you shared here. You'd shared it over the telephone. You are a prayer for this community with what you're bringing, starting at $300. That is an answer to a lot of prayers in terms of, though, as you address, houses that meet, that's not whole hostage someone's comfort in living based on the cost. And certainly, you have a reasonable amount of costs that I think will help families to be comfortable with their little, whatever budget they have, with their budget. So you've got a pretty complete package in terms of protection with security cameras, the mortgage rates, the amenities with that property. I'm impressed with what you're bringing so far. Haven't seen it yet, but I'm impressed. But thank you so much for what you're bringing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that when I met you at the Planning Commission meeting and heard what you were about to do, I'm like, that's it. It's answered prayer. That's what it is. It's what we, exactly what we need. So, thank you for choosing Aiken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What that also reminded me of is when you talk about, these are workforce houses, as you're saying. These are not people that are just looking for a home with no income. They have income, but as you said, they can't afford it. But people often say, "Not in my backyard. I don't want that in my backyard." It depends on where you live. You don't want it in your backyard. But this is a great location that you're placing these ho, these homes, these lodgings. They're not very far from Walmart, Sam's, wherever they want to go. And it's within walking distance if they don't have transportation. So it meets a lot of demands that these individuals will be looking for as they look forward to moving into what you're building.
That's right. That's part of what attracted us to the site.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
So all those in favor? Is everybody here this time? Unanimous. We now move to petitions and requests. The first item is approval of a resolution authorizing the listing of projects to be funded from capital project sales tax. Five, Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. It is a resolution authorizing the listing of projects to be funded from capital project sales tax five. We've had multiple work sessions. A lot of this, too, is just council goals, direction, public input, just over the years about various projects. And we do have $79,659,732.99. We rounded it up a penny to make it an even number, even dollars. We have projects for water system improvements, sewer system improvements, stormwater improvements and maintenance, our public safety, whether it's truck fire apparatus, body cams, radios, security cameras, system upgrades, as well in city parks, as well as expansion to the next phase of neighborhoods. Hoplins Gardens needed restoration and improvement, traffic signalization upgrades to major thoroughfares, including whiskey, silver bluff pine log in downtown corridors. And then Generations Park. We have, we have to add water and sewer as we expand the park, as well as amenity, improved amenities. Plus, you've already dedicated some plutonium money for that. HO Weeks, Citizens Park, Amentum Theater, they're called Playhouse. One thing that was pointed out was that we have a joint project, City of North Augusta, Aiken County, and should council approve this, we are going in. We looked at going solo and doing, upbuilding a new fire training center. We've had a fire training center on Dupont Drive just down the street from Aiken High School since the 1970s, which is in sore need of upgrading. It is a center that all, almost all the volunteer fire departments in the county use. SRS Fire Department, North Augusta Public Safety. So we needed to upgrade. However, the county approached us. We, in discussion, regular communication with the county. They mentioned this, we are partnering with them. The facility would be located still within our fire district on Wire Road at Gun Range, just down the road from our soon-to-be constructed water plant on 30 acres. Right now, I think the fire training grounds is about two acres, maybe. It's significantly smaller, but it's, it's a very compact area going to 30 acres. Then we have some renovations, facilities, and upgrades to our public safety station and some of our other city facilities, as well as pedestrian and bicycle improvements based on, again, a lot of feedback, comments, and discussion with council. And this is before, in the form of a resolution. The process, council passed this, is it would go to the county. Their sales tax committee would begin looking at this along with projects from the other ni, other municipalities in the county and Aiken County proper. Ultimately, the council, county council by mid-August would have to approve it because there's a deadline to get it on the November general election ballot. And should a majority vote of count, of the county voters vote to approve it, this, the 1% would begin, would be reimposed and begin collection on May 1st, 2026. So this is before council this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilwoman Gregory and Councilman Waltz second it. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Yes?
Mr. Beedenbaugh, for the City-City County Fire Training Center, I assume that, that that's our portion, the county's putting in something also?
That's correct. The county already, in round four, has $2 million for the site. The, they are putting in another $2.5 million for, as part of round five, and North Augusta's putting in $2 million. The rationale there is, North Augusta's getting substantially less CPST revenue than the City of Aiken and City of, excuse me, in Aiken County. So that's why they're putting in just a tad bit less.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just for the record, this is toll tax, capital five, $80 million?
That is correct. It's almost $80 million, $79,659,732.99.
You're putting in the rest?
I'll, I'll put the penny. I could swing that, yes. But correct, current, just to give you some perspective, in the CPST III, which closed in 2019, the ballots, projects totaled $44,600,000. CPST IV, which we're currently in, it will collect that 1% through April 30th, 2026, is $50,911,000. So again, this is based on, this, the city staff did not, you know, pull a number out of the air. This number came from the State Department of Revenue, and it's based on point-of-sale receipts. What they do is they look at every entity in the county that, that, where 1%, where, that's, that sell goods and services, subject to sales tax. And they compute, you know, where a lot of the transactions take place. So yes, it's almost $80 million.
Thank you. Where was I?
All of you.
Thank you. So, council comment? Thank you. Any other comments from council? No. All those in favor? Unanimous. Every motion's passed. The next item under petitions and requests is approval of a resolution to provide water and sanitary sewer surfaces to property located at 1754 Columbia Highway North. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. This is the city water plant, so we do hope you'll consider providing water for it. The, the new water plant at 1754 Columbia Highway North, we are required to ask for service and go through the proper channels, as would any other new development in our ut, water utility area. This is currently not contiguous, so it is just a water request. We will sign an annexation agreement to come in when we're contiguous. We, those present voted six to nothing to recommend approval, provided we comply with the following conditions. Since I will stake my job on that we will do this, I will dispense with reading them. I assure you, we will comply with all of these in the effort of time. And we, we have this before you in the form of a resolution.
Thank you. Well, we don't have to worry now. Is there a motion? Councilwoman, Councilman Waltz and Councilwoman Gregory second the motion. Comments from public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Everybody's here. It was unanimous, the vote.
No, I wasn't sure what our city manager was staking his job on.
That we will comply with all the conditions that are, numbers one through seven.
The final item under petitions and requests is approval of a mutual aid agreement with Lexington Police Department. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. We do periodically have mutual aid agreements that must be approved by council with neighboring or nearby law enforcement jurisdictions. In this case, it's with the Lexington, the town of Lexington's Police Department. It's been reviewed by the chief and other staff and the city attorney, and it is before you for approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilman Waltz made the motion. Who's my second? Councilwoman Broll. Councilwoman Broll made the second motion. Are there any comments from public? Thank you. Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion's passed. Oh. I'm getting punchy. It's unanimous. Thank you all. We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of 30 minutes. No. Okay. Oh, my gosh.
I just wanted to tell y'all. Gail's my buddy. She's always got my bag, and so do y'all. A lot of people don't look at me when I speak to them downtown, because I have my buggy, and they think I'm homeless. Surprise, surprise, when I get my inheritance, when I get divorced. I couldn't figure out daddy waited till I divorced. But I wanted to thank certain people. First of all, the man from the Aiken Parks and Recreation, whatever that truck is. I was on Hain Avenue, and I went looking for cans, and I looked down, and there was a $20 bill, and I ran over to his truck, and I said, "Look what God gave me." And it was him. Somebody asked me, they said, "Do you get trash, food out of the trash for the birds?" But then I figured out my Jose Luis. He leased one night, he left four different kinds, Chinese, just in case I didn't feel like eating that. But then one man had the breakers. He said, "Becky, did you get that bag out of the trash?" I said, "Jason, I made that fried chicken for you." You know, my favorite Bible verse, Hebrew 13, too. You know, my favorite Bible verses, Hebrews 13, too. "Always entertain strangers, for you never know when you entertain an angel." But since October 13th, 2022, was when I woke up to that fire and my life changed. Because I'd taken a video for my boys, but that next week I aged 10 years. I looked horrible. But in Aiken, it's been angels entertaining me, the stranger. Because nobody in my family's helped me, and they all live in here. But I'd rather them angels entertain than them. And y'all are my angels. Y'all look after my city. My city, just like it's your city. Sorry. I wouldn't live anywhere else. I'm from Casablanca, Morocco. I was born in 1961. I came here when I was 18 months old. I left when I was 21. Came back 15 days after my 61st birthday when I crossed that border, South Carolina. I've never seen anything more beautiful in my entire life. God bless y'all, and I see you tomorrow.
Good luck, Becky.
Mr. Beedenbow, are there any items from the city manager?
I, I would like to provide clarification real quick on something that was said earlier by someone speaking about the, the bonded, or the debt, the local debt, that that was approved by the Joint Bond Review Committee. And, you know, we did have consult with the delegation with, before that was approved. So that did go through all the proper channels. So I wanted to clear that up for the record, and that's all my comments today.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move that we extend it for another hour.
Councilmember Broll and Council, Councilmember Price second the motion. All those in favor? Thank you all. Thank you all.